Thank you. I have an invocation by Pastor Kevin Woodgett. Doctor Pastor Kevin Woodgett.
May we bow our heads. Gracious God, our Father, we are thankful today for the day that you have given us. We're thankful for all that you've done in our lives. Father, we ask that you bless this city. Continue to grow us into the places we need to grow. Bring us into the places we need to go. And we will forever give you the glory and give you the praise. Amen.
Okay, citizens' recognition. And it is my turn. Good evening. Okay, citizens' recognition award. I'm honoring a young man. I'm gonna call him a young man because I can remember when he was born. Mr. Jason Walker. Born and raised in Muncie, Delaware County, graduated from Delta High School in 1981. After graduation, Jason started working in the electrical trade as an apprentice for several contractors. In July 1992, Sheriff Dan Elliott hired Jason as a patrolman at the Delaware County Sheriff's Office. Jason continued doing both law enforcement and electrical job. That same year, 1992, he started his own electrical company, J.L. Walker Electric. During his nearly 30-year tenure at the sheriff's office, Jason served as a member of the SWAT team, the dive team. He also held various leadership roles. In 2003, he was promoted to corporal and became the day shift supervisor. Later serving as the training director for the sheriff's office, which specializes in custom homes, multifamily housing, and small commercial work. Today, the company employs seven employees and two outside crews. Jason is also a founding member and president of the Muncie Delaware County Black Chamber of Commerce, where they work to build and advance minority businesses by providing counseling, funding, and workshops to take their businesses to the next level. Jason married his wife Angela, with whom he has been married for nearly four years. Together, they own and operate four daycares. All but one located in the Muncie area. They also own and operate Walker's Event Center, located in Muncie on South While Angela loves Royal Caribbean Cruises. They both attend Church of the Living God, where Jason serves on the finance committee. Together, they have four children and one granddaughter. Jason Walker's life is a testament to his dedication to both his community and his family. His nearly 30-year career in law enforcement, combined with his successful entrepreneurial ventures, reflects his commitment to service and excellence. Please join me in recognizing this month's recipient, Citizen of the Month, Mr. Jason Walker. I appreciate the council, President of the Council, Harold Mason, and the city of Muncie for allowing us to operate our businesses in Muncie. And we appreciate you all. We're not going anywhere. Thank you. Nice job. Yeah, good guy. Okay, roll call, please. Present. Here. Here.
Present. Present.
Present.
Present.
Here.
Here. Okay, approval of minutes. So moved. Second. Hold on just a second. Let's back up. Let's back up a little bit.
Okay. I withdraw my second.
I had made a commitment to recognize a couple of people before we do this.
All right, thank you, Mr. President. I had received an email from one of our constituents who is impacted by ALS, which is, I'm not going to even try to say the scientific name, but it's also known as Lou Gehrig's disease. Apparently, May is ALS Awareness Month. And so, they didn't get it to us far enough ahead to be able to do a resolution. So we just want to recognize that May is Lou Gehrig's or ALS Awareness Month. It's a devastating and fatal neurodegenerative condition, and it destroys motor neurons, leading to paralysis, and in most cases, death within five years of diagnosis, and there is no cure. Military veterans are affected disproportionately by ALS. And a lot of people, their minds will remain sharp, but they lose the ability to do much else. So, we just want to make it clear, or make the recognition that this is ALS Awareness Month. And if you feel the need, that you can look up, learn a little bit more about it, and possibly contribute. That would be wonderful.
Thank you, Councilman Gilligan. Councilperson Selvi, you had something as well.
Yes, I did invite Mr. Mitch Isaac from the Schaefer Leadership Academy and his youth council. I'm gonna give the floor to Mr. Isaac, and he will explain the reasons there. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Selvi. Good evening, council and attendees. My name is Mitch Isaac, Executive Director for Schaefer Leadership Academy. And you're going to hear from a small group of students from the Muncie Youth Leadership Program, which for the last six years has been a collaboration between Burris Laboratory School, Indiana Academy for Science, Math, and Humanities, and Muncie Central High School. Every year, 10 students from each school participate in a year-long project, where we tell them, find a problem you want to solve in your community or your school, and come up with a proposal to solve it. And every year, we have about five or six different groups. You're gonna hear from one student group. This is before they step up and explain what they've done. It's important you know, this was their idea. And this is an issue they identified, and this is work that they completed. So, I'm gonna stand off to the side now and allow the students to introduce themselves and tell you about what they've done. Students.
Hello, I'm Vivana, and thank you all for giving us this opportunity to present our findings with you all. As Mitch has just stated right now, we are a group of high school students. And before we begin our presentation, we wanted to tell you that we're here to try to make a change in our community through bridging gaps in this community in equality by fostering equality through art. And as Mitch has stated, we have a project that we've been working on for the past couple months. And it's kind of about the Unity Bridge. Many of you have probably seen the Unity Bridge and seen the state that it's in. And we are trying to repaint it. And although we weren't able to do so in the past couple months, we were able to send out a community survey to our town of Muncie. And we were able to get over 6,000 people to view our survey, and over 1,100 responses from the community, including over 200 community comments.
Wonderful.
Like Vivana mentioned earlier, we had over 1,100 responses. And there was a wide demographic of ages that completed the article, but a majority of them came from ages 25 through 34, meaning that the people, the most, well, this group of people are young and wanting to have a voice in the community and want to have a change.
Themes we found through our survey were a strong desire for connectivity and accessibility by improved pedestrian and bike access around the Unity Bridge, and suggestions for safer crossings, wider paths, and better integration with parks and neighborhoods. Another theme was civil pride and public spaces. Respondents value green space, cultural installations, and public art, as well as a push for inclusive, welcoming, and well-maintained environments that reflect Muncie's identity. In our survey, we had an open feedback section, where respondents could leave comments or suggestions, anything they wanted. And three comments that we found the most were a hope for change, concerns about upkeep, and a call for collaboration.
We've also included a QR code for you all to scan if you can take out your phones. And this QR code includes all of the results that we were able to accrue from our survey. So if you guys would like to take a look at that.
Good for you.
It should be at the end of your package if you have.
I'll send it to him.
Do you have artwork in mind? I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Mr. President. Do you have artwork in mind for it?
So, what we had in mind for this was just to repaint the Unity Bridge with the mural that was already on it, because it has been vandalized, and we don't want that look in our community.
Do you have a plan in mind as far as fundraising for it or anything like that? Or is this just kind of more to get the information and then hope somebody takes it on?
We were trying to get more, I guess, community awareness. And we thought that this would be a really great opportunity to do this. So thank you all again for this opportunity. And we were hoping that through this, we would, as I stated before, get more awareness, and somebody would be able to help us kind of make this possible.
That's nice.
Mr. President. Yes. So, Mr. Mitch, and I, and other people in the community, including Ms. Abrams, there's a need to repaint it. But there's been tasks of working with CSX to give us permission. Because right now, nobody is to touch the bridge, because it is a federal law, and it could be a federal felony. Working with the railroad company is extremely tough. They're mean, and they have their lawyers. And I'm mean as well. So we're almost there. In our conversations before we paint, there's other people, and Mitch will be working with the art community. This has nothing to do with me. I'm just facilitating the permission from CSX for the community to do what they want with it. And this was, we needed it to come from the community. And the first step was having the youth leadership figure out what the community wants and what are the needs. And I'm working with the permission to paint. But before we paint, I'm working with them to fix all the rebar. There's a lot of chips. There's a lot of brokenness before we even paint. But Mitch, if you want to explain what's the next step after we get the final permission.
Yeah, I do want to add that the Muncie Arts and Cultural Council were very helpful to the students in creating the survey. And their newest Executive Director, Tanya Said, and their Board Chair have been incredibly helpful to the students in creating the survey. We've also been working with the A-12 Coalition and Habitat for Humanity. We also are aware that the industry neighborhood would want to be involved. Community involvement here is very important. So, the next steps would be to take the results of these surveys and work with our local arts community to hopefully come up with some renderings and a proposal that could then be taken to the railroads. The students had hoped to be able to paint, but when Councilwoman Selvi, who is being modest, she's been incredibly helpful, said "federal offense," the students all took a step back and said, "Maybe we should do something else." And so that's how we arrived at the survey. Anything else we can answer? Thank you, Councilwoman Selvi, for the invitation. Thank you, council, for your time. And well done to these students, I'd say, wouldn't you say, audience?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, you may.
One last thing before we start the meeting. As anyone who's been coming to these city council meetings in the past knows that Don Finnegan, who is the President of the Indiana Chapter of On and Remember, usually comes in May and talks to us about the Indiana Run for the Fallen Run. He is unable to be here tonight because he is out putting up mile markers to mark each mile in the name of a fallen Indiana hero. So he's asked me to read this for him. This weekend, May 9th through the 11th, is the 11th Annual Indiana Run for the Fallen. It's three days, 140 miles, physical boots on the ground from Fort Wayne to Indianapolis, Indiana, stopping every mile for 90 seconds at a predetermined location. 585 fallen military heroes' names that have died as a result of serving during the global war on terror will be called out over these three days. Their biographies will be read. And if their Gold Star families are at the mile marker, they will be given an honorary flag. Many of these families have come from hours away to hear their sons and daughters' names spoken out in respect over these 90 seconds. 16 runners, running in relay teams of four, carrying full-size flags on poles, running at a nine-minute mile pace with two-minute ceremonial stops every mile, will alternate. Most of our runners run between 12 and 20 miles each day. Starting and stopping points begin to wear and tear on the women. Many are veterans, but all are out there on a mission of remembrance. Muncie has numerous stops. Saturday, May 10th, at approximately 12:45, they will stop right outside at City Hall. Hero marker number 20083. Normally, two families of the fallen are out there. Come and meet them and ask about their sons. Check out other hero marker stops and approximate times at indiana.usarunforthefallen.org. If you can't be at a stop, leave somewhere on the route to cheer on the runners and support their mission. May is, in addition to ALS Remembrance Month, it is also Remembrance Month for those who have fallen in the war, in the global war on terror. So I hope that I did Mr. Finnegan proud. I know we got by much quicker than if he would be in here, but he is wonderful and very committed to that cause. And so, if you're able to stop somewhere, they'll be coming in from Albany, down Walnut Street, and then out through Yorktown. It's really moving and wonderful, and obviously a very good cause. So, I appreciate it, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the last meeting. So moved. Second. Okay, motion made by Councilman McIntosh, seconded by Councilman Green. All in favor? Aye. For roll call.
Okay.
All opposed. Okay, appointments to boards or commissions. I have one report for a board, the Ethics Commission, whom I recommended W.C. Edwards for the position, and he was voted in that position. Has come down with a illness that he's not gonna be able to fulfill his term. He called and advised me that he was going to have to step down for medical reasons and appreciated us giving him the opportunity. We certainly wish him the best. Speedy recovery. So we might want to think about a replacement. I would certainly like to put another minority in there so that this board would have some diversity, even though we don't have it anymore. We're gonna continue our diversity. So if anybody can come up with somebody that wants to nominate for that position, we'll certainly consider.
Mr. President, are you taking suggestions next meeting? Or are you gonna give them?
Yes, we're gonna do that at our June meeting. Okay, good, good.
Mr. President, are there any restrictions or requirements of this position for the Ethics Committee in regards to political party or anything along those lines?
This, yes, this person has to be a Democrat.
Okay, all right, thank you, sir.
Yes, this person has to be a Democrat. So if we can come up with somebody in our June meeting.
Okay.
Thank you. And the second, I had I had some information from the 911 Committee that I wanted to present. But it hasn't been really discussed by the 911 Committee yet. So I'm gonna hold off on giving that until after we can discuss that as a group. Any other committee reports? Okay, moving on to ordinances previously introduced. Ordinance 13-25. Ordinance 13-25. An ordinance to vacate a portion of a certain public alley at 2619 West Ethel Avenue in the city of Muncie, Delaware County, Indiana.
Mr. President, I make a motion to adopt ordinance 13-25.
I'll second that. Okay, motion's been made and seconded. Motion made by Councilperson Powell, seconded by Councilman Garrett. Roll call. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Anybody have anything to speak on that?
I'm fine, I'm just here to answer questions. My name is David Carnes, I'm an attorney with Dennis Murgar, NABR 324, West Jackson. I represent Robert Huddleston, who owns both sides of this unimproved alley right there along Ethel, and we're requesting that it be vacated. There's houses that were there have been torn down, and it's just a grassy area at this point. Thank you very much.
Anybody else here to speak on that? Roll call, please. Yes. Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, ordinance 15-25. Ordinance 15-25. An ordinance to amend the city of Muncie Comprehensive zoning ordinance from the R-3 Resident Zone to the BD Variety Business Zone on premises located at 3300 North Milton Street, Muncie, Indiana. Is there? Make a motion to adopt. Okay, motion's been made and seconded. Motion made by Councilman Green, seconded by Councilman McIntosh. Anybody here to discuss that or speak on it? Okay, roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Ordinance 16-25. Ordinance 16-25. An ordinance amending ordinance 33-24, fixing the maximum salaries of each and every appointed officer, employee, deputy, assistant, departmental and institutional head of the city of Muncie, Indiana, included herein for the year 2025.
Mr. President, I make a motion to adopt ordinance 16-25.
I'll second that. Okay, motion's been made by Ms. Powell, seconded by Councilman Garrett. Anyone here to speak on that? Mr. Wagley.
Good evening, Matt Wagley, Deputy Controller. I'm happy to answer any questions regarding the ordinance, but really what I'd like to do is clarify something I stated in last month's meeting, that the opioid funds had been appropriated. In fact, we thought the opioid funds were like the ARP funds, where multiple years were appropriated at once. And that's not the case with these funds. So, if any of them are to be expended this year, we would need to do additional appropriations, you know, of course, bring it before council. So I apologize for any confusion, but we were simply mistaken as far as how they were appropriated.
Mr. President? Yeah, thank you for saying that. Yeah, we had some emails back and forth.
Absolutely, yes. And I'm sorry, I missed, I was in and out of, I had some illness and everything. I was in and out of the office, and I missed your email. And I apologize for the length of time it took me to answer.
Yeah, I appreciate it. Mr. Gibson, is there anything that we need to do then, since that hadn't been done? I mean, is there something, or that they need to bring back?
Yeah, I think an additional preparation will need to come forward if that money's gonna be spent this year.
Right, and none of these funds have been expended, so we're good on that.
And we can still move forward on this ordinance then without?
Yeah, that's not really connected.
That's all subject to the fund being available. This is just second salary, so yeah.
Questions? Was there a paver position written in this?
A what?
Paver position?
I believe so. I didn't put the ordinance together, but I believe there is a paver position in the Parks Department.
And what would that salary be set at?
Like I say, I didn't put the ordinance together. I don't have it with me. Generally, it would probably be a working foreman type, which would probably be $18 an hour, $20 an hour, something like that.
Mr. President?
As I understand it, the person, the person who would be most qualified for this position, and again, I'm not on the Parks Board, I don't have anything to do with it. But as I understand it, he held a position in the Street Department.
The Street Department.
So the paver position would be in the Parks Department as opposed to?
I believe so, yes.
And so we would need to, we will need to amend this ordinance because there's not a paver position in the Parks Department or in the Street Department. And so that position, nor the line item to fund that position, exists at this point in time.
Okay, like I say, I didn't put this ordinance together. That was my understanding, maybe I'm mistaken on that.
I would guess then, would we need to table this until they have that information? Or would that disrupt payment to our employees? I certainly don't want to do that.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think, if it's just one position that's missing, you can always amend this to have that position later. But I don't think that would affect adopting what's here.
Perfect.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Wagley, will you or Mr. Wright just send that information to us or make an amendment?
Absolutely, yep.
Thank you, I appreciate that, sir.
Mr. President, I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to ask, is this position already exist or you're making a new position for this individual?
I believe it's a new position.
A new position, so there's no one there at this time?
I don't believe so.
So this money's not going out?
Right.
So, excuse me, but when I asked Mr. Wright that last month's meeting, y'all didn't even know anything about it, so is that just found out here lately or?
It was certainly found out by me lately, I can't speak for Mr. Wright, he's, he's out of the office this week.
Any other questions?
Just for clarification, so this, this position isn't filled, even though you've mentioned that there's someone who's?
I don't, I'd have to get back with you on that. Like I say, these are things that I hear around the office when I'm in the middle of something else and somebody's discussing it. But yeah, I'll, I will track that information down. Like I say, Mr. Wright is out of the office this week, so it'll probably be next week, but it'll certainly be before the next council meeting.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Wagley? Mr. Wagley, do you have anything else?
No, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the motion has been made and seconded. Do a voice or a roll call? Roll call.
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Ordinance seventeen dash twenty five.
Ordinance seventeen dash twenty five. An ordinance amending chapter one fifty nine flood plan management of the Muncie Code of Ordinances.
Mr. President, I make a motion that we introduce ordinance seventeen dash twenty five.
I'll second that. Okay, motion's been made by Councilperson Powell, seconded by Councilman Garrett. Anybody here to speak on that?
I can, in my summary to you all, this was prepared by Alan Wisely. If you recall, you just adopted the floodplain management ordinance a few months ago, there was a small Scrivener's error in the definition of special flood hazard area, it said county when it should have said city, so this is simply making that correction.
Voice vote. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Ordinance eighteen dash twenty five.
Ordinance eighteen dash twenty five. An ordinance of the city of Muncie amending chapter ninety two and chapter ninety five of the city of Muncie Code of Ordinances due to the anticipated opening of a skate park at West Park, West Side Park.
Mr. President, I make a motion to adopt.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion's been made by Councilman Green to adopt. Seconded. Introduced.
Introduced, yeah.
Introduced.
Yeah. I'll second that.
Okay, seconded, seconded by Councilperson Sally. All in favor?
No. There's somebody here to speak about that.
It is? Oh, okay.
The Parks Board President.
Brad Marshall, Parks and Recreation Board President, just here to answer any questions you guys may have. As you know, we're well on the way on the skate park and kind of reviewing the rules and the ordinances there. These have all been approved and recommended by the Parks Board and just bringing them here before council for you guys.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
You guys have any signs put up out there, skate at your own risk?
That's part of this, is we are planning to adopt and post signs out there, but we want to have established rules.
There's, there's bunches of people out there.
There are. It's, it's not open yet, there's closed postings and there's no construction equipment out there, so there should not be any skating yet until that park's officially open.
Do you have any time, when that's going to be completed, six months to a year or what?
I do not have that information. We've requested that and have not been provided with an open date yet.
Okay, because it's been going on a long time out there, and like I said, those kids are eager to use it.
Yes.
And it looks like heck around there.
Yep, like I said, we've, the board has reached out, has not been able to get a completion date yet.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just to kind of piggyback off that, Councilman Disment, we all know pouring that concrete in winter time, can't really do it, you know, we did kind of some stalls, but it looks great. I did see the, the park closing sign, so you know, I, to kind of go off that too, they know it's not open yet, they're not supposed to be in there, but I will tell you, the eye pop going through there is phenomenal, it looks good. I know they're not supposed to be in there, but we can see the use that's already in there now, what we're going to get when it opens is phenomenal. It, Councilperson, thank you, thank you for all your hard work on the skate park. You, you deserve a round of applause for the hard work on the skate park, so thank you. That, I know you fault and fault and fault for that, so thank you. Thanks to the Parks Board. I know this zoning's going to help out a lot too, with, you know, with the sign usage and all that, but it is really good to see, I know you're not supposed to be in there, so don't be in there, but the use that we have now more than justifies why that the skate park is going to succeed in the area that it's in, so thank you.
Thank you. I have always, it brings me joy, I drive by there often, hoping it is open and hoping that we have an opening date and have everyone here on the council like share the jubilation and, one thing I would request, and I spoke with you on that, and I want to make it public too, I would appreciate it if the date for the opening for the park is on a weekend, so more families and, and children and youth will be there to celebrate. I know most of us have jobs and we're not retired, not the, not every, some people are retired here, they did, they worked hard most of their lives, so thank you for, but if it could be done on a weekend, because A, we would like to be a part of it, and also that's when the kids are not at school and parents are not at work, I think this is a great thing for the community. So if you could help the council, make sure that's accomplished as a board, Parks Board President, I would owe you a lot of gratitude.
Well, our intention is that once the, the park is complete and safe, we want to get it open as soon as possible, but then certainly a ribbon cutting ceremony and an event out there would be great to schedule, to have all you guys attend as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other question?
I don't know that this is something for you, Brad, but I'm just like looking at this wording, I would like to know the answer to it at some point before we actually have the vote. It says no person shall use a skateboard on public property within the city, and I wonder if that includes sidewalks? Because if kids are going to the skate park, they're going to want to get there with their skateboards, and I don't like the idea of kids not being able to, you know, use skateboards on sidewalks, but I don't know if that's, you know, if this encompasses that or not. So I guess that's something that.
I think it's only for publicly owned property, so like City Hall.
When they're talking about parks and our lots and stuff, okay, okay.
Any other questions? Thank you, sir. Thank you. Well, that concludes our agenda. We got to vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Vote to carry. Anything else that anyone else, Council might have? Any concerns, questions?
I will say Seth, nice shirt. Go Pacers, yeah, yeah.
Well, with that being said.
I hope you have other comments.
Public comment?
This is Jeanette. No, Mr. President, members of council, my name is Bob Swince with the London Witty Group, and you should have in your packets a report from the Muncie Redevelopment Commission.
Oh.
This is a new requirement that not only do we give this to you like we've done in previous years, but we put it on the record that it has been provided and answer any questions you may have about it. We're in reporting period for R D Cs around the state, so we, this is the second one, we've got a couple more to go this year, but we just want to get it on the record it's been provided to you and answer any questions you may have.
I do have a question.
Councilman Sylvie?
Thank you. You did say that you will have more than one of these reports for this year to provide us?
There'll be a couple reports that R D C needs to do.
And my question to you is, can we go back and ask you about this report, have questions on it the next time you're here?
Sure.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I'm sorry, Craig told me to show up and talk, so. Okay, I, like I said, I gave it to Craig a couple weeks ago.
It's okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Jeanetta Presley, am I saying that right? Yes.
Hi, I'm Jeanetta Presley, I live at fourteen nineteen West Eighth Street, I live across from the G M empty lot, and we had Thomas Park Avondale had their neighborhood cleanup. I'm also on the board of the Thomas Park Avondale Council, and Ms. Silva was there and helped with our cleanup. I'm here because of the cleanup that we did in front of my house on Eighth Street. We took twenty eight bags of trash, carp, the, the, the big bags, the ones you get at Lowe's, off of that fence row, twenty eight bags of trash. Now that's just on Eighth Street, that's not down Perkins, and that's not there at apartments either. So it's owned by the city, that is growing up, there's stuff growing out of the, out of the fence, and it's, it's a disaster, it's a disaster. Now, as you all know, I'm on hospice and I can't do a lot of work, but me and my partner, who is an elderly person, got out there and picked up twenty eight bags of trash Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, and then the trash trucks come around on Saturday and got, and got those. I'm not able to do anymore. I did my part, I feel, but the city needs to do something about that property, because the trash is horrible. If you go down Perkins, it's just against, it's, it's, it's all against the fence, it's all blowed out, it's all down in that open area, there's old plastic swimming pools that's, that's gotten put into there, it's a mess, it's just a mess. So I just want to bring that to your attention, that we did get twenty eight bags of trash just in front of my house alone, just in that one block area. I couldn't believe it myself that there was that much trash against that fence, so.
Thank you, Perkins.
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Jeanetta.
That being said, I hope that you guys do something about that and get that cleaned up, it makes our neighborhood look horrible. And then we got a bunch of properties cleaned up over on Twelfth Street. So we, we did a lot, we did a lot, we got a lot of properties cleaned up on Twelfth Street, we got alleys cleaned up, so we weren't just focusing on the Avondale part, we went over in the Shedtown part this year, Mary Beth did a great job on doing that and got people together. Mike Martin's street team also went out and helped with that cleanup too, so we are trying to clean our neighborhood up. But as far as that property goes, we can't do anything, it belongs to the city, the city needs to do that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Courtney Marsh.
Hello, Council, my name is Courtney Marsh, I live at two thousand three South Beacon Street in Southside Neighborhood. You might notice me because I am your Southside Neighborhood Representative and President. We just wanted to come to you all today to let you know that not only is Thomas Park Avondale doing their cleanup, but we're going to be doing ours soon, as well as a lot of the other neighborhoods around Muncie. I can't speak for everyone, but I do know that we would all really enjoy everyone's help if you possibly could come out. I know that a few of you have already been to a few, I know that a few of you are planning on coming to others. Our specific cleanup is going to be held on May the seventeenth, we're going to meet at Frankie D's over on East Memorial, and we're going to take off from there. There are a couple other neighborhoods, like I said, that are going to be doing their cleanups and they're scheduled for this weekend and next, so if it's available in your schedule, I know that not only myself, but other neighborhoods would really enjoy the extra hands. There's a lot of trash in our neighborhoods, and it's not anyone's true responsibility in some places, others, as she mentioned, maybe, but we want for our neighborhoods to be beautiful, and I know that you all want our city to be beautiful in so many different ways. So today I'm just asking that if you have any extra time this weekend or next, the Muncie Sanitary District has been so timed to put together a schedule for us, it's on their Facebook page, they've tagged all the neighborhoods in it. Sorry, neighborhoods for being your rep today, but if you could take a look at the schedule, if it accommodates your schedule, if you could just stop in for twenty minutes, thirty minutes, whatever, fill a bag in some neighborhoods, that would be a tremendous help for us. We encourage everybody to participate because we need your assistance just as much as you need ours. And so I would really appreciate it, as well as other neighborhoods. If you guys have any questions or you have a neighborhood that you're interested in kind of more focusing on, please reach out to us. All of us have emails, they're not hard to find, and if you need one and you don't know it, reach out to somebody else you do know, because we're all friends.
Yeah.
We all hang out in the same circle, literally, the circle of Muncie. So that's my tale today. Thank you very much for your time, you guys have a great night.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Sylvie?
Okay, I do know that Morningside is in need of a lot of volunteers, and you don't have to live in Morningside to volunteer, so if you're from another neighborhood and would like to come, their cleanup is the tenth this coming Saturday, so, and from my experience being out there, it is great because you see what the people, your hands on, you see the problems, and I'm going to give a shout out to our building commissioner, we were cleaning two houses and I could not believe it, I was like, no. So I did call him and he came out on a Saturday and helped with, you know, figuring out what the next step is for that property. So it really is an eye opener when your boots in the ground, and I encourage everybody to do that. And again, I'm going to give a shout out to Morningside, and if you have a few minutes or a couple hours this Saturday, if it's, we meet at the park, they meet at the park, and we can help the neighborhood and get to know new people, so thank you.
Hi there, Brian Shaw, six hundred East Washington Street, I was actually out delivering newsletters to our Neighborhood Association. We also are having a cleanup on the seventeenth of May, so if anyone wants to come out and help with that, that would be awesome. So, let's see here, I had some questions just for the council, if you can point me in the right direction. I know in the past, like the M R C has done some of these projects where these rent to own properties and whatnot. If, again, my name is Brian Shaw, some of you have my email address, if you don't, if you'd like it, follow up with me after the meeting, I'll give it to you. If you don't, if you'd like it, follow up with me after the meeting, I'll give it to you. I'm just looking for more information on those because there's potentially some development in our neighborhood and I just want to be aware of, you know, everything that kind of goes along with that. There's one particular property that the MRC is looking at. And also a neighbor who would like to acquire that adjacent property is also looking at it. So they're going to be trying to compete for that. And I just wanted to get all the information. If this property owner is not able to secure it, you know, what does that mean as far as like what the MRC is developing and whatnot? So I'll be going to the next MRC meeting to ask some questions there. But we're going to stop here since you guys met tonight. And you probably already have some information on that particular topic. So that's it.
Are these properties in the Emily Kimbrough?
They're not in the historic district. No, it's outside of the historic district. So yeah, we don't have to worry about the historic nature of it right now.
You get with me after the meeting. We'll get with it and try to figure something out. I can point you in the right direction. I don't know a whole lot right now, but we can find it out together. And hopefully you have, I give you a little bit more stuff before the next MRC meeting.
Awesome, appreciate that, thank you.
You're welcome.
Yes, sir.
Thank you so much. I grew up in the county, so I've only been in the city limits for about five years. Um, I live, oh, Amy Duff. I live at four oh one East Memorial Drive. Elm Street runs right beside our house. There is a property right behind us on the corner of Thirteenth and Elm. This property became vacant of May of last year. It wasn't for sale. I've looked it up. The last known owner of this address was in 2024. Um, me, my husband, several other neighbors have called police on these people. There's no utilities on in this house whatsoever. They're using their phones for lights, they're using headgear with flashlights on it, solar lights. Um, I have been told by one of the neighbors that he knows a lady that is a big time meth user, that they are dealing and doing meth in and out of that house. And there's at least twenty to thirty people coming in and out of this house all day long, all night long, walking from the other side of Twelfth Street over to this house. This house was a beautiful home and there's now just trash piled everywhere outside this home. The police have been called, the building commissioner's been called, the code enforcement has been called. But my thing is, if there's no utilities on, because if the trash and the water's not paid, your trash don't get picked up. Why is the city picking up the trash, helping these homeless people and these meth heads to keep that trash, which I greatly appreciate because I don't have to get out there and pick it up every day? But the police are not doing anything about it. I have grandkids. I don't want my grandkids around this. Every time you ask them why they're there, somebody gives a different story. A boyfriend and girlfriend got into a fight last week. He killed the dog. The dog is now buried in the backyard and we're smelling it. So I don't know where else to turn to get these people out of this house.
Who owns the house?
Nobody knows. So the for sale sign disappeared. And then all of a sudden, and I called the police because I'm up all hours of the night. I called the police when I seen them in there with flashlights because it's pitch dark. There's no utilities on. And there's been like three or four other neighbors that has called the police as well.
Have you, uh...
It's nineteen nineteen Southland.
Yeah, you might try to record his office.
I have called everybody that they, that the city has told me to call.
To find out who owns it at least.
Even the police told me, we're trying to find out who owns it. But it's like, I was just recently told that there's a new group of people that showed up from Chicago that are now staying there.
Okay, well, we'll, uh...
I'll meet with you after the meeting and get with that. If there's no power, electricity on, that's against code. You can't be in there, period. So I'll give you my number and we'll, we'll make sure that that gets taken care of. I promise you, for sure.
I mean, because we, we have an empty lot next to us. We get out there, we clean up that lot. My grandson loves to do it. You know, he calls them dirty pigs because they're throwing their trash everywhere. So I'm trying to keep our corner clean. But now I've got all these homeless people that are coming from each end of the blocks all hours of the night.
Okay. Mr. Garrett has assured you that he would...
This is my last resort to get these people going.
We'll, we'll get that, yeah.
Get some kind of resolution.
Mr. Garrett is a pro in this. He used to work in the building commissioner's office. So you got the right guy on the job.
I greatly appreciate it.
Yeah, we'll get that.
Because I don't want these people in my neighborhood. I don't know about you all, but I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is that the end of the list?
Yeah.
That's the end of it? If there's nothing else to be said, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
Motion's made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Property taxes are due May the twelfth for the spring insulation. Don't forget to pay your property taxes. City Council.
Did I sign it?